Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Tuesday night, September 3rd, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum. All members of council are present. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session of City Council held on August 19th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval of these minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. Next item is communications. I wanted to check with council members to see if they have any communications they want to share. Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, yes, thank you. I did want to also remind everyone that the regular board meeting for the Athens City School District is still coming up on September 19th. That is a Thursday, 6:30 PM at Athens High School Auditorium. And this is once again for that -- they are looking for that public participation with the overall look of the buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Any other communications? Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. I've had several citizens question what is happening with the parking garage and the elevators. I have explained to them that there apparently was some damage done by a lightning strike, but it's apparently a hardship for people with disabilities and people with children in strollers. They have to risk themselves, and I think it's something that needs to be brought to the attention. Thank you.
The mayor will have the most up-to-date information on that, but we do have an update on it. The city has been working on it. Councilmember Crowell.
I'd just like to announce that tomorrow night will be the Environment and Sustainability Commission meeting. We will start at 6:15 downstairs on the first floor of this building, and we will be having a presentation from Sean Beasley of the Athens Water Treatment Plant, and we'll have our two new members, Sarah Conley-Baloo and Austin Babrow. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If nothing else, then we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliasson, Auditor Hect.
I do have one. I thought I'd go ahead and bring up here tonight because I was contacted by the messenger, Tyler Buchanan, about the Alder State Award. And yes, we did get one this year. We've had several, and so I just thought I might have gotten back to him too late to be in the paper for whenever he was going to put it out there, but I thought you should know. And so here's our certificate, and I have a very nice letter from the Alder State to go along with it. And while I'm up here, I'd like to thank everyone in the city. The audits are very stressful and time-consuming and involved, and really, if it weren't for the cooperation of all the department heads and the administrative staff, you know, handing over paperwork, support for what we do, what's in our reports, rewriting narratives and things like that, we wouldn't be getting this. So I appreciate all that.
Congratulations. It's also a lot of hard work from your staff.
It is. Thank you to my staff.
Very sincere thanks. Mayor Patterson.
I only have a couple items to make, President Isley. The first being, some of you may have received this. Apparently, 10% of the nation receives what's called the American Communities Survey. The survey is taken every year, but that survey helps inform the distribution of $675 million. The census is always also coming up, so this kind of helps inform the census. It's a long survey, takes about 40 minutes to fill out. So when people get them, I strongly encourage, if you do get one of these, we receive one at our household, so please fill it out because it's an important survey. That's one thing. The second thing is that the Service Safety Director has put together a map that, I know you can't see that, but hopefully this will be up on the city's website shortly. This map is of the different meter zones, from low intensity, moderate intensity, and high intensity. So this will be on the city's website, so everyone will know where the higher-used meters are, which has a dollar an hour to use those meters versus the moderate, which is 75 cents an hour, and then the low intensity is 50 cents an hour. You should also note that there are new meters going in over by South Side Park or Dairy Lane Park. Everyone has their own name for that park. There's going to be some meters put in down here where the shelter house is off of Dairy Lane, so make note that there will be, I can't remember how many meters it is, and there'll be 10-hour meter parking in that area, and that will be 50 cents an hour.
And the update on the elevator. Yes, please.
Yeah, the elevators in the parking garage, they did take a lightning strike. It took a hit. It fried a lot of the internal components within our new elevator cars. They're covered by insurance. The parts have been ordered, as I was told, the parts should be here this week to repair them. There's two CPUs associated with our cars for the elevator. They were both fried, and so it's not going to be an inexpensive fix, but it is covered by insurance, so we will likely recoup most of, not all, of our money for that. I think it's close to $40,000 in damage done because of lightning strikes to the elevator shafts.
Okay.
And remember, McGee, we are very much aware of the impact that this is having. We, hopefully, they're fixed this week. In reality, what we should have done is I should have either blue-marked the curbs or the poles to create more accessible parking along East Union or East Washington Street right there. We didn't do that because we ran and felt we were going to run into some problems with the manual for uniform cuff control devices. We didn't have the right kinds of signage down there for those poles, but thank you for bringing that to my attention, which it was already there. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on now to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 7519 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the City of Athens and the City of Dayton. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 75-19.
Second.
Thank you. Quite simply, safety is paramount, and this is in the best interest of both communities. It's supported by the Ohio Revised Code. We've had similar situations and agreements with other communities similar to this. I think it's, the intent again is in the moment of an emergency where both parties are able to support each other and collaborate. Thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval. Are there any comments or questions from other council members? Okay. And any other comments? Did you have a question, Councilmember McGee?
Yes, just one quick question since it's an upcoming election year and since Dayton is probably going to be somewhat important to the, on the national scene. My question is whether our officers would be called upon to do duty on a regular basis for traffic control or other factors in Dayton if they're being visited by, say, the president or somebody else? I mean, is that an anticipation for some of their work?
No, it's not. No, it's not. And as was described before, you know, first and foremost, you know, Athens Safety Services for the City of Athens, so we could even be called and asked, and we would have to weigh that to see whether, you know, yeah, an event that might be going on. This came out of, as you remember, the tornadoes that tore through part of Dayton, and they really did need help with a natural disaster of that magnitude down there. So that's where it started from in making sure that we could enter into a mutual aid agreement with the city. And that's, they're kind of both ways. It could be for large events that happen in the fall here in Athens to where we might need some assistance if they can, could afford to let officers come here.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments, any comments or questions from the audience? If not, we'll vote then. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 7619 is an ordinance amending ordinance 9118, authorizing design engineering services associated with the city-county sewer expansion project number 317, and is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 76-19.
Second.
Thank you. Quite simply, again, this is amending ordinance 9118 and is authorizing the city service safety director to expend up to $300,000 in the sewer maintenance fund and up to $45,500 from the water maintenance fund, and that is the change. And if you notice in the ordinance, that's the bold print. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 7619. Any comments or questions from council members? Any comments or questions from the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Ordinance 7719 is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to renew a lease agreement with Ohio University, and this is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 07719.
Second.
And just for a quick review, this is a lease agreement. No money's exchanged between the city and Ohio University because a small portion of our parking garage, actually the elevator shaft, is on their property. And so this is a 25-year lease, so this will be revisited when I am 74 years old.
We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 7719. Do we have any questions from council members or administration? Comments or questions? Mayor Patterson.
I just want you to know that the lightning strike to the elevator shaft wasn't because it's on the way. Trust me.
Any comments or questions from the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8019 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 8019.
Second.
This has been discussed in committee and read two times now. Essentially, we're moving some funds from land improvement over to recreation funds and supplies, just basically accounting, housekeeping.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 8019. Any other comments or questions from council members, the administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading. 8319 is an ordinance amending ordinance 3219, authorizing 2019 street paving and repairs, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Yes, Councilmember Kotzis.
I just wanted to make note that I did pass out that communication to all of council about the process of going through the different streets and what they're paving and why they're paving this year, and then also to invite anybody to engage with Director of Engineering, Bob Hetty. He invited anybody, if they had specific questions, to reach out to him on the paving schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 84819 is an ordinance closing park placed West Mulberry Street and a portion of Court Street on Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, with a rain date set for Thursday, September 19th, 2019, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM for a barbecue sponsored by the Joint Police Advisory Council, known as J-PAC. This is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Do you need to suspend on this one?
The barbecue is the day after our next meeting.
It doesn't have an emergency clause either way. It does, and it likely needs to be suspended. It still wouldn't be in effect. It still wouldn't be in effect anyway? Okay. All right, then we'll move on.
Ordinance 8519 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to offer an amendment to 8519, Section 1.
I'd like to second that motion.
The amendment that I would like to add is to appropriate $8,300 to Fund Number 101.718.5539, Parking Enforcement Equipment Use. This is to increase the fund so that we can pay for a bill that's outstanding.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for amending, reflecting the new bill that we've become aware of. Yes, and Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. Auditor Hect is here as well.
Okay. Do we need any other information?
I sent an email out, but it was kind of late this afternoon. We were going to use $5,000 from another account line in the 500s, which is a refund line for parking enforcement, and I would like council to go ahead and not plan to use that and add $5,000 onto the appropriation because I feel that at some point, they will need that money for refunds, and we would have to come back for another appropriation. So to leave that refund money in the fund and just appropriate the $13,000-plus that we need, if that makes sense.
Are you saying you don't need the amendment? I'm not sure I understand.
No, we need the amendment, but instead of 8,000, I would like it to be 13,500.
Got it. Okay, because you don't want the 5,000 taken from the other account.
From another account line.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Let's amend the amendment to reflect what the auditor has stated.
13,000.
So it'll be 13,000.
Is it 13,000 or 13,300?
13,300.
13,300.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, we have a motion and second for amending this ordinance. And are there any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules for 8519.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is, as I mentioned, there is a bill outstanding that is definitely overdue. We need to pay it. We've just become aware of it, so I'd like to keep this as debt-free and our bond rating as high as possible.
We have a motion and second for suspending the rules for ordinance 8519. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 8519.
Second.
As stated.
Okay. We have motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8619 is an ordinance authorizing a delinquent debt collection agreement between the Ohio Attorney General and the City of Athens Income Tax Department. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 8719 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29, Housing Regulations, Section 29.09.02, Penalties, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. We'll now move on to ordinances for first reading. And did you have a comment?
Yes.
Okay. And this is pertaining to the Housing Regulations Ordinance 8719, read for the second time.
Correct.
And your name and address.
My name's Damon Crane. I live on Hudson Avenue in Athens, and I'm running for mayor of Athens as an independent democratic socialist. At first glance, I think this ordinance sounds great. After all, it's part of what Ellie Hammack and I have been campaigning on for the past six months, so I'm happy to see we're already changing city policy for the better. But while talking about slum lords doing jail time makes for dramatic headlines, the problem is that no matter how tough-sounding a piece of legislation is, it doesn't mean anything if it's not enforced. And right now, we've got two big problems with enforcement. The first problem is that we've got a code enforcement office that's too understaffed to be able to uncover the vast majority of violations. For five solid months, Mayor Patterson tried to get away with claiming that we have six or seven rental housing inspectors, when, as I've been pointing out, and as the Athens News finally verified last week, we only have four rental housing inspectors. To actually enforce the housing code, we'd need for all of the mayor's seven imaginary inspectors to be actual, real-life city employees and to add one more inspector on top of that. The second problem with enforcement is that we've got a city law director who, for decades, has been disregarding the housing code and bending over backwards to let slum lords off the hook. How do you increase penalties for multiple offenses when Law Director Eliasson treats multiple offenses as a single offense? And what's the point of passing any ordinance at all if the law director is just free to ignore it and do whatever she wants anyway? These aren't academic questions. They make real differences in the lives of the 80% of city residents who live in rental housing. I'll give you an example. Once upon a time, I rented an apartment on First Street. Code enforcement had inspected it a few months before I moved in, and at that inspection found zero violations. But after I moved in, I found all kinds of problems, from gas leaks to missing fire safety equipment, to a roof that was full of holes, to damaged and unsanitary flooring, to clogged plumbing, and mold, and more. And after I brought these problems to the attention of code enforcement, they agreed, and they cited my landlord for nearly two dozen separate violations. That's what the code enforcement office means in its annual reports when they say that due to limited staffing, they're a complaint-driven agency. They don't have the resources to conduct adequate inspections, so they depend on tenants themselves to identify and report most violations. And since most Athens tenants are inexperienced, first- or second-time renters in their early twenties, most violations don't get reported, they don't get corrected, they just pile up year after year after year until the rare complaint-driven inspection suddenly uncovers dozens of violations all at once.
Mr. Crane, you've got about 30 seconds.
Thank you. Now, the housing code says that each day of each violation is a separate and complete offense. So in my case, my landlord was looking at thousands of offenses and up to a quarter of a million dollars in fines, but Law Director Eliasson, who was then the city prosecutor on my case, decided to treat thousands of offenses as just one offense, and in the end, my landlord was fined a grand total of $75. I had to spend nearly half of my lease term paying to live in an unsafe apartment, and thanks to Law Director Eliasson, the landlord had to pay a $75 fine. To be continued.
Thank you. Yes.
I also had a comment.
Okay. And you'll have three minutes likewise. Thank you. And if you could let us know your name and address.
Sure. My name is Ellie Hammack. I'm a member of the Athens Revolutionary Socialists, and I rent an apartment on the South Side. I'm running for city council as an independent socialist. I'm happy to see city council finally taking a small step toward curbing the copious abuses of slum lords in our community. However, like Damon, I am concerned that the ordinance does not go nearly far enough in protecting the vast majority of Athens residents who are renters. Ask virtually any renter in Athens about their experience with landlords, and you are sure to hear horror stories. Just this week, I heard from tenants about chronically flooded basements, broken glass, smells of stale urine, roofs caving in, exposed wires, leaking plumbing, extreme humidity, bedbugs, mold, unauthorized entry, and broken fire alarms. I also heard from a young woman who finally ended things with an abusive boyfriend, only to find herself facing eviction because her landlord is insisting that she pay her ex's back rent, even though she is on disability and a fixed income. I empathize with her because a couple of years ago, I found myself homeless after leaving an abusive partner. Unfortunately, it's a common problem. So we need tougher penalties for landlords with multiple violations, absolutely, but we also need to strengthen the housing code itself, and we need to adequately staff the code enforcement office so that they can be proactive and not have to rely on complaints from tenants who may not know their rights or may feel too vulnerable or intimidated to report issues for a variety of reasons. We also desperately need rent control. Many people who work in Athens already cannot afford to live here, and if we succeed in forcing landlords to clean up their properties, we'll also need to make sure they don't pass those costs onto tenants. Damon spoke to another major issue, which is the fact that Law Director Eliasson treats multiple violations as one, no matter how many violations there are or how long they persist. The case Damon talked about with his landlord was all the way back in 2008, but just last week, Eliasson told the Athens News that letting landlords off the hook by treating multiple violations as one remains standard operating procedure. So what does it mean to increase violations if we don't have an adequate system for inspecting properties, identifying violations, or enforcing violations? None of you are wage workers or renters, and at least a couple of you are landlords, so it's not surprising that you waited until your hand was forced to do anything about the awful living conditions your neighbors endure. As a working-class renter and a socialist, I intend to do right by the 80% of Athenians who live in rental housing if I'm elected. But I also recognize that real change does not come from city council. It comes from workers and tenants ourselves. We greatly outnumber bosses and landlords, and when we get organized, we can turn this whole community and this whole world upside down. It's long past time we formed a tenants' union to protect and defend each other, to fight for lower rent and better conditions. It's long past time we were united to fight for a world with no landlords at all, in which safe and livable housing is a human right. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for the comments. We'll now move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 8819 is an ordinance to adopt the City of Athens Affordable Housing Plan to Support Accessibility, Sustainability, and Economic Development, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. The ordinance before you today is a request for council to adopt the plan that I introduced on behalf of the Affordable Housing Commission last week. And I would support, appreciate council support in this, and it's just to solidify our position as members of council for support for the plans in the Affordable Housing Commission's recommendation, and that it also serves a purpose for moving forward with the plans for University Estates development.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Kotzis.
Yes, thank you. And I was just thinking about this document. Would it be, is this something that would then live within or be referenced to in the comprehensive plan as we're still working through that process? I'm just kind of wondering where this document is going to hang out.
To live?
Yeah.
I think that it will likely be referenced in the comprehensive plan. That is not necessarily my call to make on that issue.
I understand, yes.
But my hope is that it would be a guiding document for council, and I know that there are specific actions that I will be requesting that the city move forward on as, once this is hopefully adopted, as a guiding document for what we would like to see happening in the city.
Thank you. Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. Councilmember Grace, on Section 2 of the proposal, it says, "The ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moments permitted by law." But you've just indicated that you would be tendering some regulations that would actually be the ones that would take effect. I wondered, is there anything that is actually taking effect in this particular plan?
It is that the city would be adopting the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Commission as a guiding document. The document is the City of Athens Affordable Housing Plan to Support Accessibility, Sustainability, and Economic Development, much like we have economic development plans and a city planning document. This is, we are adopting this as part of our guide, as the, who, the direction we want to be going as a city, but there are not.
So it's kind of a stay tuned. More to come.
But it is adopting this as an approved.
In parallel, though, this would be the Environmental and Sustainability Commission report.
Right.
Yes. Councilmember Paul.
I would think that it would be linked with the comprehensive plan. One reason why you do these is to give due diligence to decisions that the city will make in the future, also because this is very similar to Also, because this is very similar to, you know, Complete Streets policy that we have adopted. This is a very common way that we let administrations, one after another, know the feelings of council and the feeling of the different coalitions and commissions out there that are advising us. This is their, one of the tasks that they have been put forward to put forward times like this. I want to say thank you for all the hard work that the commission did.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes, I have a question. Under recommendations, 3B incentives, line seven, property tax exemptions, reductions to the extent permitted by law. The city does not have a property tax. That's the county. So I don't see in any way how the city can influence the county to give incentives. I mean, that means you'd have to go to the treasurer, the auditor of the county and say, "Could you please, out of the goodness of your heart, take a hit and let these people have reduced..." Other than that, we have no power.
No, we cannot reduce property taxes. We can encourage partnerships that, between multiple entities, that would include, like, we can say, "Hey, we, as the City of Athens, want to partner with this developer, and ask also for the county to partner." And we can also work for TIFs.
Yeah, I can see all that. I mean, that's, I mean, I, you know, V and so on, but I--
I think that--
I don't see the point of having a section in there that, one, we can't really enforce, and, two, we really have no power to do.
I think that even in, like, Complete Streets and those sort of plans, this is aspirational and not necessarily instructive. And that maybe in the future, who knows, when we get more appropriate types of taxation in the future, it may be something that we can use as a tool. Right now, it isn't really a tool. There's some other ones that aren't necessarily a good tool right now, density development, you know? But that doesn't mean that it may become a tool in the future because circumstances change.
Well, certainly, it could in the future. But again, I just don't see the point of having it in there now when, frankly, in all likelihood, the county will never, ever allow us to do anything type of-- certainly, the Ohio Revised Code won't. I mean, we're just forbidden to do it. So--
I guess my answer to that is we've passed resolutions stating, "This is what we believe would be beneficial." And we do those for things that the state tells us. We don't have the power to actually control this, but in cases where we think it would be beneficial, we state, we use our voices for that purpose.
And I think what we could do, Councilmember Reisner, and, you know, respecting your comments about this and your points, convey that back to the Affordable Housing Commission. And this is a report. And take that under advisement that we did offer that comment back about the property taxes at this point. Mayor Patterson?
You know, one thing that could be possible, Governor Reisner, is the city does have several parcels that are all scattered all throughout the city. And it's possible to enter into a development agreement with a developer on some of these properties. But the property, if you think about it, the land is the city's land, and it's tax-exempt currently. And there could be potentially some ways in which we can keep it that way, whoever, who's living the house enters into a lease agreement. That way, we can keep costs down because the property taxes aren't going to go up. We can figure something out. I don't mind this language in there. You know, I think I understand where the Affordable Housing Commission was laying on that. I somewhat agree with what Governor Fall was saying, that, who knows, in the future, there is some ORC change where they look at ways in which property taxes can be reduced. I can't imagine that right now.
I can't either.
Yeah. One of the things I really do appreciate about this is something that we've been exploring for quite some time. And that is that we all know that there is developable property in a lot of places around the city, which is, right now, is land. And one of the things that becomes difficult for a developer is that that developer knows, "I want to build 50 homes here, but I'm not going to pay the expense of having to build the street, the sewer, the water, and all the other, you know, storm rain, all that stuff." They're not going to do it because the price point for that house, in order to do it and to build those 50 houses or whatever, those houses are going to probably have to go for $350,000 apiece. And that's not the market that we're looking at. So with this TIF, this redevelopment TIFs, we can do that. It's a way in which we can help developers get out from under the burden of having to build something that's just not penciling out. And we know how badly we need affordable housing here in the City of Athens. We view this as a powerful--
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. We'll move on to ordinance 8919. It's an ordinance closing a portion of Court Washington and State Streets on Monday, October 28, 2019, from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM for Trick or Treat, hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. This was introduced at committee last Monday. And I do want to mention that this is a great community event. And this is also, since Member Fall has referenced Complete Streets a couple times, this is also something of taking that public space and turning it into something just a little different than what it is for most of the year. So from 5:30 to 8:00 PM on Monday, October 28, that's when we will have Trick or Treat at all the Uptown businesses that are participating for the kids and people of Athens.
Any comments or questions? We'll move on to ordinance 9019, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 26 and 27, 2019, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens on Halloween weekend and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. I do love this title in that it says, "A large number of people converging." Love it or hate it, this is part of Athens, and we do our best during this weekend to try to make sure that everyone stays safe. So that's paramount in this conversation.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, President Isley. And thank you, Councilmember Katsas, for acknowledging safety as paramount. Again, changes that have occurred over the years and living in this small town for a few 24 hours, I've witnessed, an example being the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee. So that's an attempt to look at the collaboration and coordination of events such as this with input from city administration as well as an entity that wants to see a fun, safe Halloween. Thank you.
Ordinance 9119 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, "Unnecessary Noise for Scheduled Bandstand Performances" hosted by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee on October 26 and 27 Halloween weekend and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. This is just suspension of our noise ordinance in anticipation of the impending noise that we will have during the Halloween block party.
And then the next correlated, or related, ordinance, 9219, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, 11.04, Chapter 11.04, "Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting to Allow Vending in a Designated Area" on October 26 and 27 Halloween weekend and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Katsas?
Thank you, President Isley. Yes, correct. So this is allowing us to allow vending to happen during the Halloween celebration on October 25th, or 26th and 27th of this year.
Okay, thanks. Ordinance 9319 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 7.05.26C, Regulation of City Parking Garage Rates on October 25, 26, and 27, 2019, Halloween weekend and declaring an emergency. And is introduced by Councilmember Katsas.
President Isley, thank you. This is suspending the meter rates in the parking, city parking garage from Friday through Sunday of that weekend, 25th, 26th, and 27th of October.
And during that weekend, is that the portion, is this used for the city administrative purposes? Or it's just, it is free parking, that entire weekend?
It's just free parking.
Free parking, okay. Thank you.
Anything to offset the crunch?
Right, okay. Any other comments or questions? 9419 is an ordinance amending ordinance 9917, "The Revised Agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners to Extend Sanitary Sewer Collection Services to Unincorporated Portions of the County." And is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This agreement has lasted for several years, looking at the expansion of the sanitary sewer. We are basically doing some housekeeping on changing when capacity fees are paid to the city, reducing the time significantly to no more than 60 days after closure of the construction loan for the project in question.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this? Ordinance 9519 is an ordinance designating a zone for the annexation area on Hillcrest Drive, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This ordinance is to accept the Planning Commission's recommendations about the zoning designation for an annexed piece of property. So this is a first reading. We will have a public hearing as to this recommendation of designating it as a R1 zone. That public hearing will be on October 7 at 7:00 PM here in these council chambers. Thank you.
We now have a resolution for second reading, R 719, "A Resolution Accepting the Amounts and Rates as Determined by the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Leveys and Certifying Them to the County Auditor." Introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And then we have a one-reading resolution, R 819. This is a resolution requesting the Athens City Planning Commission consider amending the zoning code to include short-term rentals and residential zones within the City of Athens. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This particular resolution is the start of the process that will go on for, I'm sure, several months. It's to ask that zoning code be changed so that if regulations are passed by the city for such short-term rental stays, that it will be meshed with what's required in the zoning code. Currently, we have very limited regulations on short-term rentals. We know that they're going on. We know that it's not as much of an issue as other communities. But like many other communities, we need to, you know, we need to take it on and make sure that it's regulated so that everybody remains safe and that there's fairness and protection of people's property rights and people's neighborhoods. So this is the first. It will go to the Planning Commission and the resolution for them to start their process. During that process, there will be public hearings, or at least one. And then they will make their recommendations. While they're working on that, which is a whole different timeline and under different rules, I will introduce the license, the short-term rental license process that I'm working with the administration and the law director and looking at a lot of other communities and talking to a lot of people and listening to people during the comprehensive plan to make regulation fair and to encourage some of the other things that we've been talking about, such as affordable housing, diversification of our housing stock, diversification of possible economic development within the city. And we know that that's always a good thing. Here are the different definitions. That's the big takeaway on this. It's the definitions, and then they're put in the different sections of Title 23. Do you want me to read it? Or, there are a lot of them, so. There's definitions for guests. Guest night, pretty self-explanatory. What a guest room is, minimum square foot for one guest, two guests. Homestay, a single house, a single-family house or duplex with no more than two guest rooms. There shall be no separate or additional kitchen facilities for guests. Guest rooms cannot have stoves or ovens. You're kind of traditional sharing the house with somebody who's coming in. Operator, the person who is operating the guest rooms. Short-term rental is a dwelling offered for rent for less than 30 days in any 30 consecutive days to the public. And tourist home is the other one. A single-family house that is rented as a whole unit for short-term rental, no more than six guests for no more than 30 consecutive days. short-term rental, no more than six guests for no more than 30 consecutive days. Each room must have a minimum of 70 square feet or floor space, and each additional with 50 square feet or floor space. So these are the definitions in the license ordinance that I will bring forward in the next couple weeks. The same definitions will go forward, and the regulations concerning these definitions and these operations will be presented. So, questions?
And are you in fact making, at this point, making a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to adopt R819.
I'll second that. That's fine.
Okay. So we'll open it up for questions, Councilmember McGee.
Yes, I do have one question. It seems the tendency in the, in this kind of situation is to, is to rent homes out and try to make a fairly reasonable profit on those homes with a homeowner. I just wondered, your resolution doesn't include anything that would be classified as a hostel, which would provide low
Oh, like rooming board?
Yeah. Short-term room and board
Right.
Such as
That's an entirely different section of the ORC. So, no, not at this, we don't have actually even a rooming house ordinance anymore, code, don't we? We got rid of that from a long time ago. So, I mean, those sort of hostels or multi, you know, there's no reason why Procos' new hotel could be a hostel. That would be allowed in those sort of, because a hostel really is just a certain type of hotel, you know, sort of thing. So that's going to depend on our, or the Ohio Revised Code definitions and such. This is just with the pure short-term rental that's seen across Ohio. Does that make sense?
It does, but as I say, I'm just a little concerned that what we're doing is increasing possible profits for surfing classes and making it more difficult
Right, right.
For low-income visitors to come to Athens and find places. That's my concern.
Well, I think one of the things is that these are not the regulations. This is just asking the Planning Commission to put these in in case council does pass an ordinance in the future.
Oh, I understand.
So this is just the first step. So it's like, they have to go in tandem in order to, the regulations that I will introduce in a couple weeks, they will go through tandem readings and Planning Commission and do the things that each of those entities will have to do according to the revised code. Does that make sense? It's confusing, it's, you know, but it's what it is.
Okay. Do we have other questions or comments from councilmembers?
I do.
Councilmember Katsas.
Yes, I think, and this is going back to your email that went out maybe two weeks ago, and I think it was talking that these are, this is owner-occupied, is that correct? Or adjacent properties?
And that's the licensing. Those regulations will be within those license requirements.
Okay.
And basically, if you want to look at it in R1 and R2 zones, a home stay with two bedrooms has to be occupied by the owner-operator, and any sort of tourist home has to be within a 250-foot radius of the owner, owner-manager, owner-operator. So it's not somebody coming in and buying five houses and having five different tourist homes. It's very limited. It has a lot of regulations that are going to be put on it, and that will be when we talk about it in that committee that I will bring forward.
Okay. And I guess my question was also, does, you know, I think of like the snowbird situation when, say, somebody leaves the area for a certain amount of time. Does the owner have to be present, or am I kind of getting in the weeds at this point?
Well, you're, well, it's like, this is the trailer
Yeah.
For the exciting movie that we're going to have in a couple weeks.
Okay.
So it's like, stay tuned, sort of thing.
All right.
You know, it's like one of these serials.
And if I could just convey one comment that I had. I had a conversation with a citizen at the city pool over the summer, and they had been participating in this type of business, and they said that the market has changed, so they felt like, at this point, they actually pulled out of it, they're no longer doing it, because they had found that people just want, they want a clean house, they don't want to come and stay in somebody else's house, and so that was kind of the, they felt like that, you know, not to single out one in particular, but Airbnb, that the whole model has kind of evolved a little bit, and so that, I guess, the idea of people coming in and staying with you or staying with your personal effects is not as, it's not looked upon as being an attractive thing. So I don't know, as time goes on, I don't know if that'll also be, if this is just going to complete, you know, continue to evolve and change, but that was something I didn't know about, and I learned about this summer.
That is one reason to put it in through a licensing process, because having a license and doing regulations through that license process is a lot more agile than the zoning code. The zoning code takes a lot more to steer. So if you find that there's other new markets or new, whatever comes up with whatever, you know, that's now a short-term rental, then those sort of things can change and be more agile at this moment. This, you know, we don't legislate for markets, you know, whatever it is, is some markets, you know, housing, staying with people is a really hot thing, who knows? And sure, it may change, just like rental housing changes, but we have a process for permits for people who want to do it, so.
We've got a comment from Councilmember Grace and then Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I just wanted to say that I have had residents of the city come to me asking, you know, is the city going to create a policy for Airbnb? Because they see that as, you know, somewhat an empty nester or retiree. They see that as an opportunity to rent out a room during graduation or during mom's weekend and just have a slight additional income. And so I've had people who are currently renters who have said, you know, if I even had talked to people about mortgages for purchasing a house in town, and they said, well, if I could show that the house had space to offer this in the home, then that would help me obtain a mortgage for the home. And so I know that there's interest from residents of the city to be able to go through a process to do this the correct way, and so I wanted to thank Member Fall for all the work she's done to get it to this point. And much like, you know, we, the city adopted regulations regarding e-scooters in anticipation of the possibility that they might come, so that it makes a lot more sense to have a plan in place than if people do want to bring e-scooters or open a home stay business, there is a process to follow, rather than trying to fix things after the fact.
Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, Madam President. I too have been approached by numerous people in my neighborhood and in the city who are interested in this, and so my question, maybe for you, Member Fall, is to explain a little bit more, this process is a little bit different than a lot of the ways that we bring forward ordinances and changes to the city code, starting with the resolution. And I see that in Section 6, it mentions that this was, as you said, that this would go to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission is asked to give its recommendations back to city council within 60 days unless a public hearing is required. And then it also says that the commission may determine that a public hearing is appropriate. And for myself and for the public out there, I'm interested in how, is there a requirement for a public hearing, or is it, will it be up to the Planning Commission to decide if it's appropriate?
It's up to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is an entirely different piece.
Right.
I can say, you want to do something, but it's up to their internal rules that they have and to the ORC that they are commissioned under, and it will be, you know, go through their process.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Because I assume, I believe the public would like to be involved
Yes.
In a hearing and in lots of discussion about this.
Right. And so, and then also the licensing regulations will also, when those are introduced, there'll be time for people to come and make comments. I have been, you know, meeting with a lot of people out there on it. My personal kind of background, you know, planning background, is that in something as complicated as, like this can be, it's easier to react to a plan or react to regulations instead of saying, well, what would you like, you know, sort of. And so I think that because it is a tool, a dual track with the Planning Commission, that I wanted to separate them a bit, and then when we talk about the license process, people will see how it goes together.
Let the record show that my recommendation to the Planning Commission would be that they hold a public hearing on this issue.
We can suggest, we can suggest, and so part of this resolution is, yes, we would like a hearing.
Do we know
Mr. Planning Commission, I guess.
But it is, under the Planning Commission's jurisdiction, as to how they handle the case when the case comes before us.
Understood, thank you.
But trust me, we
Other questions or comments? Yes, Mayor Patterson.
I have a question for Councilmember Fall. You know, I, in my 20-some odd years of living here in Athens, I was a renter with three fabulous landlords in three different locations in the City of Athens for eight and a half years. And during, if that were today, as a renter, would I be able to use this as a mechanism to rent out rooms as a renter of a rental?
No.
Right.
Unless you're in Bzone, there are looser regulations, but then we can talk about that. The ordinance for the license language is, I sent it all to you, to everybody, so it's on there wherever the drive is for that sort of thing, for public, the public has it there, and if people have individual questions, they can call me or, you know, email me, sort of thing. It is, it's a complicated process because you want it agile and able to kind of keep up with the gig economy, but you also have to deal with the land issues and the zoning issues, so that's just sausage, so.
Okay. Do we have comments from audience members? Okay. All right, we have a motion and second for approval of this one-reading resolution, R819. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Resolution passes, and, or the vote says that the resolution is passed and will now move forward to be considered by the Planning Commission. Okay. We have announcements and other business, the first of which is appointment to the Environment and Sustainability Commission, Councilmember Crowell.
Unfortunately, I have to ask that we table that appointment?
That's right. You did speak about that, and my apologies for forgetting, yep. And we do have one other item, the approval of the July credit card reports. They have been reviewed.
Some move.
Second. Okay, we have motion and second for approval of those credit card reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, that's been approved. We will be in committee next week, and we have several items that have been detailed for, I know, committee of the whole. Do we have any other committees?
Maybe.
Maybe, planning.
For finance and personnel.
And finance and personnel.
It might be a
No, okay. So, just if we need any other committees, to please let
We'll need the whole
Yeah.
Councilship.
Okay. And we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Okay. If not, then I entertain a motion for us to adjourn.
Some move.
We have motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned at 8:00. Thank you very much, and we'll see you next Monday.